I always say good morning. I take a lot of naps, it's fine. It's now 6:30, we'll call this meeting to order. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded and we're on, we're live. And we got the city Sioux Falls, they're on Zoom, so they're all, they're all watching and listening and they'll be commenting when it's, when it's appropriate. For each meeting, for public hearing, we'll have the staff introduce a agenda item and present their summary report. The applicant will then be asked to, their proposal, to talk about their proposal in further detail and answer questions from the planning commission meeting members. I will open the floor to public comment. First person, first persons in support of the application, the next people in opposition of the application, please step up to the podium and state your name, address, and speak clearly into microphone. I know we have masks on, but try real hard to talk directly into it because we're being recorded and we have people on the computer trying to listen to everything we're saying. Each speaker will have a chance to speak once and keep their comments probably to less than five minutes. Speakers are encouraged to only address the new and relevant information pertaining to the item. We appreciate that you might be trying to reiterate a point, but we do, we've heard the point and we do want to keep moving with the meeting. Above all, please be cordial to all meeting participants and refrain from side conversations, speaking out in turn, or you will be asked to leave. Lastly, the decision of the conditional use permit applications may be appealed to the county board of commissioners by submitting a letter to the county and planning zoning within five, five business days. So, thank you very much. Call to order and roll call.
Commissioner Albers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Paschby? Commissioner Poppins?
Here.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Here. City Sioux Falls?
Hi, good evening, city Sioux Falls commissioners. We'll do a roll call as well on our side. Commissioner Lukey?
Here.
Commissioner Nissis?
Here.
Commissioner Norman?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum on the city side.
Thank you very much. We'll go for the approval minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review and look at the meeting minutes from last time? Are there any changes to be made, more suggestions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, we roll call please.
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Ensted?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye. City Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, the minutes have been approved on the county side, do I have a motion on the city side?
Uh, Lukey, I'll make a, a motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion commissioners on the minutes? Hearing none, we will also do a roll call vote. Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved on the city side.
Thank you. This time, we like to have some public input and non-agenda items. So, is there anything that's, you guys like to talk about that's not on the agenda tonight? Please come up and speak.
Commissioner, first we need to approve the agenda.
Need to approve the agenda.
Need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I missed that one. All right. Agenda tonight, you guys all received copies and reviewed, I assume? Do you have any, any discussion or, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, all right, gentlemen, roll please.
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Ensted?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye. City Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, the agenda has been approved on the county side. Do I have a motion and a second on the city side? Uh, move to approve the agenda, Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, Lukey, second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion commissioners? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
The agenda has been approved on the city side.
Thank you. And now, I already said all the words, but yeah, uh, public input. Anybody have anything they can speak on, not on agenda? Seeing none?
You guys speak up, we can't hear you.
Okay, uh, we see no, no one wants to speak on the public input, so we'll move on to unfinished business, are any unfinished business?
Uh, none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Toby. We'll want to consider, consideration of new business. Toby, you want to talk about the first one, please?
Sure. Good evening, Toby Brown representing county planning. This first item is located at the northeast quadrant of Interstate 29, the T exit, just off of Tall Grass Avenue. The subject property is approximately 1.22 acres in size. As you can see, the property is zoned I-1 light industrial. Property adjacent to the south, the west is light zoning. The property across, there's a driveway that, that separates from the north property, which is zone A1 agricultural and is utilized as a single-family dwelling. Subject property was constructed, 16,100 square foot building for a contractor shop, which was approved by this joint board. The applicant is requesting one of the suites, it's a five suite building, suite number four to be utilized for car sales. And so, the applicant did submit a concept plan, which shows that there is no really modifications to the interior, exterior of the building. This, this property, again, is utilized for contractor shops. This unit would be utilized for, for car sales. As you can see in the staff analysis, that staff does feel that it does meet the minimum requirements for the application. Staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions that were in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
I have no questions. Okay, county has no questions, city Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, any questions? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I did not have a question.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, Mr. To, any questions on the city side? No questions tonight on the city side of this one.
Thank you. If the applicants... If the applicants in here or on Zoom, please step to the podium, say your name, address, and give a description of, of what you're looking to do with it, please.
Good evening, my name is Manal Waz and my address is 3505, my home address, correct?
Correct.
3505 West Ralph Rogers Road, apartment seven in Sioux Falls, 57108. And the nature of this business will be an auto sales and repair shop and we will be purchasing the automobiles from the local auctions and reselling them back to the auction. And all the work performed will be performed inside, we will not be open to the public. There will not be any cars displayed outside or any work done outside. It will all be just the, with the auction and us. That's pretty much the nature of the business, is just purchasing from the auction and reselling back to the auction.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Does county have any questions for the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair.
I have no questions.
No. Okay, city Sioux Falls, do you have any questions for the applicant?
City commissioners, any questions?
Uh, Chairman, um, Lukey, I've got, just want to make sure the applicant's okay with the, the two findings and the seven conditions that county and city staff...
Nope, uh, the city is asking if you're okay with the conditions and the stuff's been laid out in this report.
Is it what's on, I didn't get anything, is it the one on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from the city Sioux Falls?
I would just ask one question, is there any painting that will be going on in here? Painting of the automobiles after they're repaired?
No, there will not be any bodywork done whatsoever. It's just automobile repair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Any further questions, city councilor or commissioners? No further questions on the city side?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I would invite anybody to the podium and that want to speak in favor of the applicant. Seeing none, is there anybody you'd like to speak against or opposition of the applicant? Please come, come up, please.
Henry Muller and I live at 27053 South Tall Grass, which is just adjacent to the property. I just mainly have a question if this is passed with this condition, will the conditional use stay with the building if the occupant leaves? Or will it disappear?
It will stay with the building.
And would that be only for the internet sales or for any automotive sales?
You know, I don't know the answer, Toby, can you help with that one, please?
The, so the permit would stay with the suite 104 as conditioned and approved by the county, or by the joint board. So, it would have to meet those conditions that are, that are recommended.
Currently, right now, they may have one parking spot available at that location. The two other occupants on the other ends of the building, they're taking over part of the one neighbor's property even for parking.
Okay.
So, I, you know, if anybody does move in, there's no place to display cars, employee cars even, because they're parking in the lot and on the curb side and then on the other side of the property, but...
And, uh, yeah. I, I maybe, if I'm right, but I believe they're not going to be displaying cars. They'll just be inside, working on, and then they'll leave and go to the auction.
Correct. If that's where the next one would be too, though, is what I was wondering, they'd follow same stipulations?
According to conditional use permit, they would have to, yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm Margaret Muller, I'm Henry's wife at 27053 South Tall Grass. We're just north of that property. Something, I'm all about business, I own a business myself in the area. The only thing that I have problem with is, are these cars going to be driving into this property? Or are they going to be, have to be unloaded? Because there is no unloading at this site at all.
Yes, we're going to be able to drive them and if we need to unload them, we're not going to buy them. They're not running. If we did, it would be a small trailer that we would pull all the way into.
You have her come to the mic, we can't hear what she's saying.
Yeah, excuse me, I'll, I'll, I'll ask her that question, thank you.
Yes, we will try to buy them running and if they're not running, which we're not going to look for cars that are not running, then if we have a trailer, it'll be very small, just enough to put one on, pull it into the shop, and then take it back out. I mean, like, the trailer would be parked inside, we wouldn't park the trailer outside.
Okay, thank you.
I run a business, I have a lot of trailers. You cannot physically put a car on a trailer that's not running in my driveway. Period. The owners of the building put up like a concrete thing there, which is kind of like a buffer between, that, we share a driveway. And the driveway is partly our, our entrance to our house. So, if you look at it, you can see the driveway, we share that right there. And if you look really close at the side of my driveway, there's a, a vehicle parked right there. Where the blue line is, is there, there's like a huge concrete thing that separates their building and our driveway. So, there is no way that you are going to be able to go through all these people, look at all the cars there, pull in any kind of trailer and unload a car that's not working. You're not going to be able to back a trailer, we've been through this with the county on the other tenants, just backing trailers into their building. It's almost impossible, they're going into our dra, into our grass. We have divots in our grass, I love our neighbors. And I'm all about good, hardworking people, I have nothing against anyone. I'm a business owner myself, but this does not make sense. In this actual location. Now, if they were at the end of one of these things, especially by Tall Grass, there would be no problem with unloading a car. And you're going to have cars, I'm sorry, if you are in the car business, you're going to have cars that, stuff happens from the auction. I bought equipment for 40 years, it happens. And you're not going to be unloading it in my front yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll close the floor to public comment, thank you. I would ask a motion from, from the county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Gary, can you hear me?
Yes, Gary. We can hear you, Gary.
Okay, you're not be, going to be able to see my face, but, uh, I was having trouble getting on for the first part of that. But I am here.
Thank you very much, glad to hear your voice. All right, is there a motion from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, actually I have a question for staff.
I would move to approve Paschby, just to get it on the floor.
I'll second that for discussion.
All right, we got a motion and a second.
Toby, I have a question for Toby, if I may. Toby, could you ha, share with us, is there any clarification of the access point for this property and the shared driveway? When that got approved, is there any documentation of why that is a shared driveway there?
I defer probably to Henry and Margaret, but not that I've seen, I guess. I have, I have talked to Henry within the last week and I think there might be some compliance issues that staff will work with on, with the property owner there. As far as this, addressing some of the issues they have. But as conditioned, as discussed with this application, I think a lot of the concerns they have should be addressed with that. If there's additional conditions that you would like to add, you could certainly do that as well.
Okay, thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with the two findings. The staff is present, or it is, already moved, sorry. Mr. Paschby?
Yes.
I just need to clarify that he's had two, the two findings on it.
Gary, do you, when you make your motion to approve, is it with the two conditions?
Seven.
Two findings and the seven conditions, is it?
Thank you.
Yes, and my second includes that as well.
Thank you.
I, I guess I just, that, that is awful tight quarters up there to get in and out of there, and it's only a blowover mile from my place. I know there's been some issues, I've seen snow piled up there. I think it's probably been shoved off of that concrete, probably onto the Muller's place. There's probably been snow pushed up there, it's just, it's awful tight quarters. If they're coming in with just a pickup and a trailer, I would guess they could probably get that in that shed. A pickup and a, and just a, just a pole-type trailer, I think they could, a 16-foot trailer, they could. They could come in and back in there.
Yeah, it's been, like, there, there's a factory thing.
Yeah, the, yeah, there's a, uh...
There's no way. There's no way, and then you got people up outside.
Excuse, excuse me?
If they're going to talk, they got to come.
But, um, but it's awful tight up there, I know it is, there's always, as you can see them vehicles parked up front there. That number four would be the second one over. And there is places in the back to park stuff, but there's no way you can get to the back unless you go through the building. And I don't know how many vehicles they're planning on having in the vehi, in the building when they're working on them and that, but there's basically no room outside to park anything other than one or two vehicles or maybe three to, because there's always stuff parked up there. So, it's a, it's a, it's a tight quarter, it's a tight situation. And I know their, their driveway by their building, if you look at that building, they got a little car or something sitting on the south side of that building and it, it's tight in there, so... But if they only have a handful of car, a few cars, how many cars can fit in that shed they're working on and all that stuff? So... I know the conditions, that's something that I'm sure we'll probably be getting, Toby will probably be getting some calls on a few things that probably aren't fully in compliance. And that's, uh, you guys coming up to do this stuff, you got to make sure to, try to stay in compliance with all that stuff. You know, so...
Okay, thank you, that's all I have. All right, thank you. Any additional discussion from the county side? Seeing none, um, can we take a roll call, Jane?
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Ensted?
Aye.
Commissioner Paschby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye. Thank you, city Sioux Falls?
City commissioners, the conditional use permit has passed on the county side with the two findings in fact and seven conditions. Do we have a motion on the city side?
Mr. Chairman, Lukey, I will make a motion for approval with the two findings and then the seven conditions.
Second. Johnson? Motion and a second, further discussion on the city side?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Lukey, I think that this fits into the area. It does sound like there is some, some stuff that the neighbors will have to work out. I mean, the shared driveway, you're always going to have stuff you're going to have to work out. But I think that this does fit the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey, any other commissioners this evening on this item? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
The conditional use permit has passed, five zero on the city side.
Thank you very much, good luck with your business.
Thank you very much.
Toby, would you like to discuss the next one, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This next item is a conditional use permit for warehousing in the commercial district. Subject parcel is located just off of Highway 11, just north of County Highway 106. If you recall, last year, the joint board did change the zone of this property from A1 agricultural to C commercial. All surrounding properties are zoned A1 agricultural to the east, again, is Highway 11. Subject property does, did or does have a single-family dwelling and some outbuildings on it, but I believe that's in the process of, of being removed from the property. The application before you this evening is an application to construct Phase One and Phase Two of a multi-phased storage warehousing project. The proposal for Phase One and Two would be approximately 88,000 square feet of storage space. There would also be some outside storage on the property as well. This is the concept plan that was submitted with the application. Again, it would be for the construction of Phase One and Phase Two and then a portion of the outdoor storage, which would be RV, boats, campers, that kind of type of storage. So, the application was reviewed by staff. Staff does feel that this does fit and it is consistent with the plans that were submitted during the change of zone process. So, staff does recommend approval of this application with two findings and then also with six conditions. I'm, I'm going to modify though, or ask to modify condition number five this evening. Condition number five read stormwater management shall be in conformance with the city of Sioux Falls and Lincoln County requirements and approvals. Had some, have had some ongoing discussions with the city of Sioux Falls and their responsibilities for permitting outside of city limits. And so, I'm going to recommend that we modify condition number five from what is stated on the staff report to, and I'll, I'll read it to you, is, modify it to a grading and drainage plan submitted for review and acceptance prior to any site grading activities. And so, in saying that, the county will take responsibility for the review and approval of that grading and drainage plan submittal. I have talked to the applicant and, and notified them of this proposed change, but staff again would recommend approval of this applications with the findings and with the conditions and the number five condition is modified as I just read. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you Toby. Lincoln County, any questions for Toby?
I have no questions.
No. Thank you very much, city Sioux Falls?
City commissioners, any questions for Toby? No questions on the city side.
Thank you. I would invite the applicant, come up and explain your proposal in further detail.
Good evening, commissioners, Eric Willardson, Willardson Land Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, Sioux Falls, here representing the applicants and developers. They are also, all three of them are here tonight. It's a proposal, as Toby has indicated, for storage units on the site and they are in agreement with all the findings and conditions and the change of condition. We understand city of Sioux Falls is deferred to the county for the drainage and will certainly adhere to all county drainage requirements for stormwater runoff and detention. With that, I guess I'd answer any questions that you might have. And again, the, the developers are here as well.
Thank you very much. County, any questions for, for Eric? County, any questions for, for Eric?
Um, is this, all the units you're gonna put on, you're gonna put more on than this?
This is, you know, phase one and phase two are indoor units. The portion of, that you see in, in phase one, that's outdoor storage. There, you know, depending on market conditions and, and how phase one and, you know, goes, yes. The, the intent would be then to convert that outdoor storage to, under phase three, if you will, in the future. And do away with the outdoor, but, uh, right now it's as proposed and, but there are plans if things work out to add on, add additional buildings.
So the outdoor storage is kind of along Highway eleven then?
Right, there's a, one of the conditions is for screening from both Highway eleven and adjacent property.
And south side?
On the south side, correct.
Is that a holding pond way down there in the?
Yeah, the site kinda drains from northwest to southeast. And so, yeah, the detention pond is what we're depicting there in that.
You kinda have one there now. Are you gonna fill some of that in?
There kinda is, yeah. It, that, and that's the, that's kind of a natural little area and that would be the natural place to put a detention pond, so. That's a thought here, yes.
When that overflows, that gonna go down the, go down the ditch there?
Yeah, it would run, then be released down the ditch and I, there's a creek just to the south. And then it crosses over and runs east.
Is that ditch deeper than the field or not? Is it gonna run in the field? There's gonna be quite a bit of water coming off of there.
Thus the detention pond.
Yeah.
And a controlled release.
Okay, no more questions?
Uh, I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I know when we originally discussed this, there's a lot of trees there and they were, we were told they're gonna be staying as a natural barrier and all that. Does that, according to this plan, are those all gone now?
I drove by there on the way down here and it looks like they've started removing some of them. I'm not sure to what extent.
Okay.
Those that don't interfere with buildings, I would assume would, can stay. But, you know, there was a lot that were in there that are, that need to be removed.
Right, right. I, I know when it was discussed, one side was going to stay all trees or two sides of all trees as a natural, natural barrier, you know, for the surrounding area. The other question I have is the driveway. Is that gonna be extra wide to allow people to turn in and out with the additional traffic on a, on a busy highway?
We have been in contact with DOT. This is obviously State Highway eleven. And we will have to apply for a change in use access permit from the rural residential or ag to this commercial use. And they may require a, a right turn lane or something like that, but certainly the driveway would be wide enough to accommodate. Obviously, traffic in and out of a storage unit is somewhat minimal. But, yeah, driveway will be probably, I'm, I'm gonna guess twenty-four to thirty feet.
Thank you. Any other question from the county? Gary?
No, I have none.
All right, thank you. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, any questions? No questions on the city side.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call anybody, come up to the podium and speak in favor of the applicant.
Lynn Poppinga, and we own the property around this, the, the, the building site. We're, we're okay with the project. We are concerned with the water issue. The ditch does not drain it to the creek. We would have to run a tile sometime from the retention pond to the creek. So, that's our only concern with that, but, you know, if it goes in a ditch, it'll go in our field by the time it gets to the creek. It wasn't formed right when they made Highway eleven, so. But we're okay with, with the project, other than whether drainage is gonna be, how it's gonna be handled, so.
Have you spoken to the developers about that or?
We, we just talked here a little bit about it, yep, and, uh, so, yep. So I just, I just, my question is, five years down the road, what happens if it's not correct? Do I come back to you guys? Do we work it out against, you know, amongst ourselves or how's that work?
Right, you'd come back to the, to the county and?
You know, I'm sure we can work it out, but, you know, we don't know.
About how far is it to the creek? How far?
It's probably less than a quarter mile. The drain tile would run maybe an eighth of a mile. We'd go kitty cornered across our field to drain that pond so it doesn't stay full all the time for the next rain that comes along. The sooner later it's gonna run over. You know, it won't soak away. In, on the, on the, on this, the west side, we have a tile right behind the property that runs around the building to the north and drains in the front, front lawn. Then goes into a culvert that goes across the creek, goes across the road. That drains the, the, that, you can see that dark area, that's all drained with a, with a tile. So.
Are they gonna ruin, get into that tile when they do some?
Hopefully not, you know, like I say, it drains right into that culvert, which is right by the driveway.
Okay.
And it goes across the road into that next man's field. Depending how they slope the, you know, the asphalt. So.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Is there anyone else be, like to speak in favor of the applicant? Seeing none, invite anybody to step up and talk in their opposition of the applicant. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the floor to public comment and I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to prove with the conditions and that. I'd like to make sure that all the tile and the drainage is all done right for Lynn's sake. Cause I know with them developments like that, they might, they always end up putting more water on the farm ground than what a guy anticipates, so.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Discussion from Commissioners?
Clarification is the one condition changed as, by Toby's request.
Motion and second with the conditions and the one changed by Toby. Everyone call him?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I think we need to have a clarification, and if there is an issue with the drainage, I do not believe that would actually come back to us and become a civil matter, Toby, cause unless we're putting a stipulation that that water drain into that creek through a drain tile is one of our conditions, it would not be enforceable by our action. Would that be correct?
Correct. Correct, we'll, we'll work with the applicant to address those concerns prior to approval.
And the applicant is agreeable to that?
Yes.
Just for the mic, please.
Yes, the applicant is agreeable.
Thank you. No other questions?
All right. Any other discussion? Gary?
Oh.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Pasby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City of Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, this conditional use permit, uh, subject to two findings and six, uh, conditions. Condition number five has been amended from what you have in your, has all been approved on the county side. Do I have a motion on the city side? So move, Mr. Chair, Johnson?
Second, Lukey.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the city side?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I didn't know if Aaron could give us any insight on the water. A lot of water has been coming up and I didn't know, since that's his expertise, if he has any problems with it at all.
You know, uh, Mr. Chair, I guess, looking at it, it looks like they're trying to relocate the detention pond further to the east where the water looks like it sits today. It'll be interesting with not much of a ditch section there on how that will drain it. Their proposal is bring a lot of fill into the site and build things up or, or what have you, but it appears that that will all get reviewed and, um, commented on by the county and their staff. You know, looking at the plan that was provided, it doesn't look like a full-fledged grading plan, more of a, a site plan showing some proposed drainage patterns, so. I trust their engineer will get it right and the county will have a chance to review it.
Thank you. Commissioner Norman, any further discussion on the city side? Hearing none, we will, uh, take a roll call vote. Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
The conditional use permit has passed on the city side.
Thank you very much. Toby, will you discuss the next one, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this next item is an application to, uh, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Lincoln County and the City of Sioux Falls joint jurisdiction area by changing the zoning. It's approximately thirty-nine point five six acres. This would be changing the zoning from A-one agricultural to our, our rural residential. The concept that was submitted with the application is for rural residential multi-lot subdivision. Subject property is located in the northeast quadrant of the county. It is just off of what we, what we refer to as the, the Co-op Road in Lincoln County. And then also two hundred and sixty-ninth Street is just to the south of that. This is, as you can see, is just in the southern part of the joint jurisdictional area. Again, the subject property is on A-one agricultural. It is improved with a single family dwelling and I believe in outbuilding on the property. As you can see, that the properties to the south and a portion of it to the east has been previously changed of zone to rural residential to facilitate rural residential development. Again, the concept plan that was submitted with the application is approximately a twenty-eight, twenty-nine lot development that would be accessed off primarily, this, this portion of it is actually a township road right here, if I, if I'm correct on that, that accesses into here. And as you can see, this area, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be above my pay grade here, so Adam will jump in here a little bit if he wants to, but essentially, uh, this is an area that's identified in Sioux Falls' and shape Sioux Falls Conference of Plan, which is the Conference of Plan for the joint jurisdictional area for this particular property. Identifies this property as a tier-three growth area. And my understanding of a tier-three growth area is it does require then the applicant to extend infrastructure to that property. However, the applicant has been working with city staff and they have identified through some sewer analysis studies that this property is not a tier-three growth area that would be identified as a rural growth area. So those limitations and expectations are not required of the developer at this time. Another, uh, map that I'll show you is here. So this is the future land use map for the joint jurisdictional area for this property and the surrounding area. It does identify this property as a future residential. And so, based on that, that's our primary guidance for the change of zone applications. Uh, so as you can see in the staff analysis, is that staff, uh, is recommending deferral of this application until such time as the preliminary plan requirements have been reviewed and accepted by staff. Um, and then along in conjunction with that, then we'll bring that back with this application for a change of zone so that they're done simultaneously, um, by both actions. And again, the preliminary plan identifies the development requirements for the property. And so, uh, those requirements had not been met at the time that we drafted the staff report. Uh, since then, the applicant and their consultants have submitted that information, but that information has not been reviewed by staff and, and no recommendation has been given at this time. However, we did post the property. Uh, the applicant did send notification out to surrounding property owners. Uh, so I encourage you to, to conduct the public hearing, identify if there's any other issues. But in saying that, staff will then, will, will repost the property for, if, if everything gets approved or anticipating that this would be on next month's agenda. Uh, we would repost the property, we'll also re-advertise and the, the applicant will notify, uh, adjacent property owners of that meeting. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff. Again, per the staff report, is staff is, is generally recommending approval of the change of zone. It's just we're recommending deferral at this time until the preliminary plan has been submitted and reviewed and the recommendations given by staff. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Toby. Lincoln County Commissioners, any questions for Toby, for staff?
Not at this time.
No, no.
I have no questions.
Thank you very much. City of Sioux Falls?
City Commissioners, any questions for Toby? None on the city side.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to invite anybody up to speak in, in favor of the applicant.
Do you want the applicant himself first?
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. Yes, applicant, please, yep, if you could detail some of your, your proposal.
Proposal. I'm John Aggie and I wanna thank you guys for your time so that we can, uh, present and represent Branbu Acres ourselves. CDI is our engineering firm and the rezoning and the layout. CDI is civil design, like you see on your papers. Been in business for twenty-one years. They're based out of Brookings. We have worked with them before. Uh, they do it all, just like every other civil engineering group, roads, streets, drainage, et cetera. They also have their fingerprints on twenty-six ethanol plants in twelve different states. We have been in, we've been doing our work. We're in contact with the floodplain administrator of Lincoln County, the DNR, wetlands, and all services that will be necessary in the future to make this, to make this operative to Branbu Acres. What I really wanna emphasize is, uh, we are civic-minded people, civic-minded family. Five out of six of us are here today. If I say Jay, that's my dad. If I say Dorothy, that's my mom. Everybody's in, uh, on board with this idea. What we really need to talk about is religion, entertainment, service, safety, civic projects and education. In brief, uh, mom was a couple of months away from being a charter member of Grace Lutheran Church, sixty-one years. Entertainment, dad and his brother were charter members of the Sioux Falls Stock Car Racing Association, better known as Houston Speedway. Service, three generations of auto service, safety, three generations of volunteer firemen, better known as Sioux Falls and Split Rock. Jay, uh, was on, was a charter member, just like Tim's dad, Tom Byrne Senior was a charter member also. Civic projects, like I said, Twenty-Sixth Street never went through to Cliff Avenue until Jay, Dorothy and the City of Sioux Falls got together. They sold that hill of clay to Twenty-Sixth Street so it could go on through. A number of years ago in nineteen sixty, if any of you remembers, it did not go through at that time. Education, uh, Jay and Todd were both on the Board of Directors for the Southeast Area Technical Service School. And this was, in brief, Jay's idea to develop this, I mean, quite a few years ago, but he has passed and mom is on board with this situation. All of our initial requirements have been All of our initial requirements have been made and completed, as far as what we had to do, like I said, DNR wetlands, et cetera, in the fall of 2020. Being there's this little bit of a delay here in us and, and CDI getting information out as quick as we could, Mark Cotter, he was, he's been great to work with, but he finally gave us a green light, had a written approval on the 19th of February. We look forward, we will look just like the surrounding areas, as shown on the map, we are surrounded by three rural, rural residential sites, and it was, it was good of Mark to, to write that out, where it says, we're outside tier three, and we will support you and your project. This is my brother Al.
Thank you, I'm Alan Aggie, and I'm, address 44021, 303rd Street, Yankton, but grew up in this neighborhood. I won't reiterate, per your request, any of what you heard, but I do too want to thank the Commissions for taking on this request for rezoning, and thank you to the engineering staffs and the planning staffs for the recommendation to approve this request. As noted in item seven of the staff analysis, this parcel was recently deemed outside the tier-three area and would be a rural growth area. With that determination just being made in later February, the Development Engineering Group has, in the last few weeks, finalized and submitted the preliminary plan. I want to assure everyone that the Aggie family intends to follow the applicable city and county codes and ordinances for this development, and we want to make sure it's done right, and will be a complement to the neighborhood. To that end, and based on the Sioux Falls Code, Code of Ordinances, from chapter 157 for subdivisions, Article 157.051 says that approval can be made with conditions, and the request is that you would approve the rezoning application with the conditions expressed, that the final review be done with, with the city staff, and that we have all that in place in the near future. As you know, schedules are hard to get for materials, equipment, contractors, so we'd like to have that in place as soon as possible, so that we can get some of that stuff lined up, get on their schedules as quick as possible this year. So, again, if you would consider that condition of approving the rezoning, and have that complete and agreed with final review, and we have all of these certificates of approval in hand that are necessary, so, again, thank you for your time, and thank you for the approval.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call anyone up to speak in favor of the applicant, Seeing none, I will welcome anyone to speak in opposition of the applicant. All right, seeing none, I will close the Florida public comments, and I'll ask a motion of the, of the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, by the request of our planning and zoning staff, I would move to table this and re-advertise this for next week, next month's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Poppins. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gary, we have a motion and a second to table this till the next meeting. Discussion by the Lincoln County?
Say, I guess, say, Toby, do you have all the stuff in hand, and you just have not went through it all, and how long will it take you to go through, your staff to go through this?
So, so this is a preliminary subdivision plan that meets the requirements of the Sioux Falls subdivision ordinance, and they've submitted it directly to the City of Sioux Falls staff, and so, I've been in contact with them, but they're preliminary, they're preliminarily reviewing it, not just planning staff, but their engineering staff, and so, I believe the last email I saw today was, is that the deficiencies, there was a resubmital for the deficiencies, my anticipation is, again, I think we can plan for next month to schedule this for an agenda item.
Okay, there's, okay, so there's, so they actually have to approve it, and they, then you get it, and then you guys have to go through it and all that stuff.
Uh, it's not as smooth as that, but, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but it's, 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 it's going to take several weeks anyway, I mean.
Yeah, so I guess what I'll say is, is that, I'll take back what I said, is that it's, should be tabled, and then when that approvals have been done, if we can meet the publication requirements and meet the, the notification requirements, then we'll proceed with it on the next agenda. So I think that, I'll clarify that for you in the city, that that'll probably be the action that we'll have to take on it.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so you guys have a lot of, a lot of stuff to do yet, then?
There's some approvals that need to be done.
Yeah, okay. So, that's kind of where we're sitting at, then, okay, that's all I have.
Any additional discussion?
No.
All right, Aggies, I would, I, I feel the same way, I mean, I 100% understand about materials being short right now, and getting stuff lined up, I, I honestly feel we do need to make sure everything's dotted and crossed before we, we move forward. With that, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye. Thank you, City of Sioux Falls?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Eric Nibber, you before I asked for a motion on the city's side, can I ask for a clarification, was, what passed on the county's side, a motion to defer to next month, or is it a motion to table the item indefinitely?
No, if I may?
Yes, thank you.
It was, just as it was my motion, it was to table it, or table it until next month, that way it puts us under the expectation, or they should have the expectation, we'll do everything we possibly can to get it done. If the action at that time is to, again, table it, that would be the appropriate matter if it not, but this way they have a, a reasonable amount of time expectation that we're going to move forward as quickly as possible.
Very good, thank you for the clarification. City Commissioners, the motion has passed to defer this item to next month's agenda, do I have the motion on the city's side?
Uh, second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion from the city Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner Lukey?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
The motion to defer has passed five years old.
Thank you very much, guys, and we'll look forward to seeing you as soon as we get everything planned and, and gone through.
Mr. Chairman, we had a question, or?
I, I, I do believe we're, we've made motions and passed, thank you very much.
Yeah.
With that, that's our conclusion, and, uh, your motion to adjourn.
So move, Albers.
Second, Poppins.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Albers?
Aye.
Commissioner Enstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Pashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Poppins?
Aye.
Commissioner Jonglin?
Aye. City of Sioux Falls?
Commissioners, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Lukey, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner, I'll second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nissis?
Yes.
Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Excuse, excuse me, everyone.
Commissioner Fisher? Yes.
Excuse me?
Toby, has that been recorded? We're good.